Please let's give her.
No, it's working.
Okay. All right. I'd like to call the Plan Commission Work Session meeting to order on Monday, August 2nd, 2021 at 6:01 PM. Janelle, could you please take row call?
Berto.
Here.
Gretzsmacher.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Zaschke.
Here.
Schmitz.
Here.
Ward is excused and Bell is going to be a little bit late.
Okay, comments, correspondence, and concerns from the public. Janelle or Bo, do you have anything?
I don't have it.
Okay, we have one guest. Does that guest wish to speak to the Plan Commission on a non-agenda issue?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I so moved.
Motion by Gretzsmacher, second by Zaschke. All those in favor respond with an "I."
I.
I.
Opposed? Carried? Approval of the minutes as published. Is there a motion to approve those, or were there any questions, corrections, comments?
So moved.
Motion by Schmitz.
Second.
Second by Gretzsmacher. All in favor respond with an "I."
I.
Opposed? Carried?
Do we have a hand raised by our guest?
I don't see one.
No.
I think he's muted.
I see a thing right under Mary Kay's name, the hand raising sign.
I don't see that.
I don't see that.
Okay.
Okay, item number one, consider a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Stats 19.85 sub 1 sub G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, specifically discussion regarding the opinion from legal counsel that pertains to potential zoning code amendments. Motion by Berto.
Second.
Second.
Second by Shumway. Row call, please. Berto, yes?
Oh, yes.
Gretzsmacher, yes.
Schmitz, yes.
Zaschke, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Janelle, you want?
So I will make a motion at 6:16 that we return to open session. Motion by Berto.
Second.
Second.
Second by Bell. Berto, yes?
Bell, yes.
Yes.
Schmitz, yes.
Shumway, yes.
Zaschke, yes.
Okay, we've returned to open session. There is no action to be taken. Item four, discussion regarding and review of the village's zoning fee schedule and the applicable sections of the village's municipal code. Bo, are you going to share your screen or?
I'm, I can. Give me one second here.
Meanwhile, you're doing that, the the single question that I have pertaining to this is, you know, has staff looked at this before Plan Commission is looking at this? And have they determined whether or not these fees are appropriate for the time that it takes for the paperwork and for the recording and everything else like that? Has staff done that?
Um, no, at this time I have not. Since I've been here, in the two years that I've been here, I have not reviewed the fee schedule.
Okay, so then, is it kind of then maybe a little premature that we discuss the fee schedule if staff has not figured out, you know, charge out rates and what time is?
Yes, I think it's important that the Plan Commission got to look at it, but I have not had time to review it myself. I would like, if we're going to make any changes, just an opportunity for me to sit down and go through them and really analyze them, you know, maybe put together a spreadsheet, just so that everyone can understand. I have not had time to do that.
Where the, did other commission members have, have questions?
Really with no reference to what the time is, you know?
Doesn't. I would make a reference. I know how much new construction is going on and how many new businesses are transferring. And I know how much the title companies have up their fees within the last calendar year because of the increase and everything. Just to comment, until I see the numbers, I won't know if, you know, if we're spot on or way off.
Jeff has got his hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Jeff. And if I miss the hands, I'm sorry, because a lot of times I'm looking at the agenda in the documents instead of the full Zoom screen, so I don't see everybody's faces. So, you know, if you have your hand up and I don't call on you right away, please just start speaking.
That'll be hard for me, but I'll do my best. I'll just defer to Mr. Bell to point out.
Okay.
Well, you're gonna have to do something for me here, Jeff. You're gonna have to start calling me Nate, not Mr. Bell.
Yeah, again, that's going to be difficult, too. I've been doing this for 29 years. I tend to focus on a professional relationship with my clients, except for staff. So Bo gets to be Bo, but when dealing with elected and appointed officials, it's typically Mr., Mrs., Dr., etc. Going back to the question, I did look over to the zoning and development fees, and I did not review them in association with the actual time and cost and effort that the village puts into them, more just a kind of quick guess or a quick opinion as to as to their fee or the total. So, right now, the preliminary subdivision plat, residential condominium plat, and commercial condominium plat are $250. That's the base fee, and then it's $50 per dwelling unit. That's the highest I've ever seen in 30 years of doing this. Not the initial fees, but the $50 per dwelling unit. So basically, that says $250 is what it would cost to review a five-lot subdivision. The reason I say a five-lot is if it's four lots or fewer, it would be done through a certified survey map. So the argument you make is that it would cost $250 plus $250 to review a five-lot subdivision plat. And then each $50, each lot after that would be $50 more. That's not typically the cost associated with ruining a plat for zoning. That would potentially be the cost associated with reviewing a plat if you're building all of the fees, engineering fees, architectural fees, stormwater fees, everything thrown in. The, the problem with that, though, is that one 10-lot subdivision is not going to have the same amount of engineering fees associated with it as another 10-lot subdivision. It depends upon soils and topography and a whole bunch of things. So that was the, the impression I had about those. The fee for certified survey map is $100. That is much lower than most communities. Most communities would be at $250, $300 for that. The sign permit is $50. That's considerably lower than most. Most would be somewhere in the $100, $150 range, and then $25 or $50 for each successive sign. So if somebody were applying for a sign permit for, let's say, three signs, it would be $150 for the first sign, $50 or $25 for each sign thereafter. The zoning permit accessory use structure is $25. Again, that's quite a bit lower than most communities. That would typically be around $100. And then the amendment to get a conditional use permit and appeal to zoning board of appeals and standard zoning permit. I wasn't quite sure what the amendment to additional use permit refers to, but I can say that whether it's a conditional use permit or an amendment, you must go through the exact same procedures. So whatever the cost is for an application for a conditional use permit should be the cost associated with an amendment to that same permit. Still has to go before public hearing, still has to be posted, all that kind of stuff. And as far as the standard zoning permit goes, that's $50, but I'm not sure what that covers. So I don't really have an opinion on whether that's low or high.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, did you take those notes, Bo?
It's recorded.
Oh, okay, okay. So you will refer to them and make notes as you go through this, okay?
Correct. And, you know, I, I can lean on other communities and see, but I think also we need to analyze what staff's, you know, calls.
Right, absolutely.
I think a spreadsheet might best describe that.
Okay.
Bo, I would say use an online spreadsheet that we can comment on.
Yes.
Since we have that wonderful technology.
Yeah, I think OneDrive is going to work wonders for Plan Commission moving forward.
Yes, it's my favorite new thing. Okay, so then, would there be a motion to table this to such a time that staff has had the opportunity to review and propose new fees?
So moved.
Motion by Schmitz, second by Shumway. Any further discussion?
I just want to comment, I will do my best to get this done. I, I don't see me getting this done in the next week before the next work session, but.
I'm not, we're not putting a deadline on it, Bo. Don't promise us you cannot keep.
Nope, I know. I think we can get that done in a reasonable time, though.
Okay.
Well, hold on, what's a reasonable timeline? I, I understand what you're saying, Denise, don't put a deadline on it. That's too aggressive, but we don't put any deadline on it, then you just have a pile up there, so.
But I, I think a good point to make, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, with that fee schedule, that would be a board approval to change that. So that could be, that could be ready by the, I, I could shoot for getting it done by the August board meeting. So that's the way it works.
Yeah, but the board meets before plan.
So maybe for the September board meeting?
How about that?
Good point. Okay, I'm going to write that.
Something that's a little bit, you know, I, I've said this a number of times, and it's been told to me that Plan Commission doesn't concern itself with, with monetary issues. Is this something that we do concern ourselves with?
If we can to prove it. Sorry, go ahead, Mary Kay.
I apologize, Denise, but isn't this purely related to planning every fee that was brought up?
But we can't implement it?
No.
We don't have the authority to implement it. So I think Nate makes a good point. I think Bo did share it from the conversation that we had with Jeff last month, so he shared it. But I believe Nate is right that, okay, we're aware of it, staff's going to review it, and then it's just going to go to board. And we can then be informed about what the board does with the new fee schedule.
Okay.
So then that kind of, the motion and the second then become moot point, don't they?
Withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm fully in support of all of this, just.
Okay. All right, item number five, conducting of a Plan Commission work session at which several sections of the zoning code, Chapter 66 of the municipal code for the village of Sister Bay, will be reviewed. Now, there were, we got through, I think, page 12 last time. I think we have to go back and address a few things on those first 12 pages. Now, last month, we made a recommendation to the village board that we extend the moratorium until such a time is that it can be passed and adopted by the village board in accordance with Jeff's suggestion. And I realized after the fact, after that meeting, that because we had gone down a really good rabbit hole on density and trying to look very differently on, on that particular issue, and I realized that really has nothing to do with the moratorium, with the conditional use permits, and the transient lodging. So I think the board did approve extending the moratorium, but I think that we need to back off all of those other extraneous conversations. And we can still have our work sessions, but I think what we should do is clean up what we have now, finish discussing what's highlighted or what we haven't discussed, zero in on that, so we can move that along to public hearing, and then eventually to the board. And we will still continue then to have work sessions, but there will not be a moratorium. And then we can go down whatever rabbit holes we want to go down pertaining to other things, conversation points or discussion points that we have picked up on that we may want to change. So how does the Plan Commission feel about that?
When would the moratorium be over then, once we decided that, or once there was a motion of approval or?
The moratorium is over when the board passes and adopts the new zoning code.
Which would be ready when we're done with all our work sessions.
Correct. But we will still continue to have work sessions for all the other conversations that don't pertain to the reason that we're having the moratorium.
So then, the moratorium's still in place?
No.
So if I remember correctly, the moratorium was to address specifically conditional use. Is that correct?
And, and transient lodging and B1, 2, and 3.
Okay, so, so that means then our conversation about changing how we look at parcel usage would be outside of that scope, wouldn't it, then?
Correct. And there's really not a reason that we continue the moratorium based on that discussion, but I think we all agree that's a really great discussion, and we may want to change other aspects of the zoning code depending upon the outcome of those conversations. But we can finish this much sooner than, and then continue on with all those other conversations.
Okay. I understand and agree with you, but one concern I have is we never get done, and we're never going to get done at the same point. This is, this is a constant, this is a living document, that's how democracy works. I guess I really just hope that we're able to address some of those, namely like the minimum, minimum building size and all that. I really hope we can address that sooner than later, and I hope we don't wait to take that to public hearing until we're completely done. I think that we should take this in chunks so that we have something that's done. And then, you know, we're breaking this down to the piece we need to complete now. Let's break it down to other chunks, so we're not trying to pass all these changes in one shot.
I think that's a great idea, that we will determine what, what it is that we want to accomplish next. We will focus on that, have those discussions, have a public hearing if there's changes to be made, and then tackle, tackle the next thing.
And after we get done with that minimum building size and that sort of stuff, then I think that I want to jump on parking, because I know how, how fun that is.
So Nate, will you have your unicorns ready?
I, I'm going to see if I can. I'm going to work on that, but.
Oh, and can I have the first ride?
Absolutely, Marge.
Thank you. Okay, so do, do we have general consensus then that that is, that is the direction in the plan moving forward?
Yes.
Yes, yes, excellent. Okay. Okay, so, Bo, then, starting from the beginning again, what, what were a couple of the changes that were made that we had to readdress in pages 1 through 12?
Yep, so I'm, I'm scrolling from the top down, so this is where you'll see the first red line here, where this is from our last discussion. I'm just going to keep this moving forward. We redlined a lot of things out. Okay, so this was the first major thing. We had add legal verbiage to site lot restrictions. Denise, I did follow up with you, and I added language here. I put it in a matching order to meet the, the layout there. So if you have any follow-up questions, you can just come back to me and see if we need to change that, but I did.
Okay, let me then describe to the Plan Commission why this was added. And can you remove add legal verbiage and talk to Denise about, please?
Yeah, I can do that.
And then I also highlighted the section in red, just to, because that was one of the things that we needed to readdress. So, in a legal opinion that I had, that I had received, it talked about how in lots that were excessively large, on how they could not then be divided into multiple smaller ones. And so the suggestion was that we create an ordinance, which has not been presented yet, because we're working on this. But within that ordinance was this wording, and I thought it was appropriate to include it in the zoning code even before we get to the ordinance. And so that is what this pertains to.
Jeff has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So Chairman Berto, as we're going through this, would you like me to jump in when I see something of a concern, or should I just sit back and wait till we get through it? How would you?
No, I want you to interrupt with outside-of-the-box thinking and concerns.
At all times, Jeff.
I just have a question. Did Mr. Sanders prepare the legal decision, or is this his comment on a different legal decision?
He did not prepare this, no.
Will that be shared with the rest of the commission?
Yes, I took it out of the proposed ordinance. Yes. So Bo can share that with the Plan Commission?
I can add this ordinance to the OneDrive and send out the link for everyone to review.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So, so just so I'm clear, we're talking about the lot dimensions language highlighted in red here, correct?
Yes.
So there's two things that I see as, well, considerable, of considerable concern legally, and that is that minimum width must, and I presume that's extend, correct, Bo? That minimum width must extend to the street, except with Plan Commission approval. So, and then the second sentence below, that depth of lot shall be in accordance with Plan Commission requirements. So that last sentence, as I understand it, is in violation of state law. That last sentence should be depths of lot shall be in accordance with the zoning ordinance. The Plan Commission has no authority to be the determining body about whether a depth is sufficient. That's what the ordinance is for, because the mission, the Plan Commission's opinions don't go before a public hearing and don't have to comply with, you know, the various posting requirements and such. That minimum what, that when, excuse me, that minimum width must extend to the street, except with Plan Commission approval. My question is, what are the circumstances under which the Plan Commission would either approve or deny that extension? And how would the Plan Commission act in a way that doesn't raise the arbitrary and capricious challenge? So is it over time that you're going to develop a policy that whenever this comes up, this is how we rule? Or does it become something that is a little bit more case-by-case, which is legally problematic?
Okay, legally, but the, everybody's zoning code is legally problematic, is it not?
Hopefully, less so over time. What I'm getting at, though, is this sentence relies on Plan Commission interpretation of when to allow or not allow something. And that's acceptable. There, there's no, there's nothing in the statutes that says you can't build that into a code. The question, of course, and I go back to my question, is what are the conditions that the Plan Commission will use to not approve this? Because unless, unless the Plan Commission is comfortable with establishing those parameters, anybody who is, feels aggrieved by the Plan Commission's decision in this matter would have a pretty strong legal case. Now, if it's the 10th or the 100th time you've made the same decision over, you know, over time, it's going to be a little bit weaker challenge to you. But right now, this basically implies that, don't do what the ordinance says. The Plan Commission's going to decide whether to extend or not, and that's.
Okay, so how about if we start where Bo's cursor is, that minimum width must extend to the street, period?
But that's not the zoning code.
Pardon?
That's not the zoning code. Am I misunderstanding this on certain lots? Maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but I don't know.
Okay, try, try, I'm trying to think how to explain it to you. The minimum width of a lot, so if you are in an R1 district. Okay, so we know a lot has to be 20,000 square feet in area, and it shall have a lot width of not less than 75 feet. Okay, so the 75 feet needs to abut the road in its entirety.
Madam Chairwoman, if you don't mind me jumping, I think there's, the, the two most common ways communities deal with minimum lot width is either at the right-of-way or at the building setback line. So depending upon the district, building setback line could be the right-of-way, right? Some business districts have no setback from the street yard. You know, you can have a, a structure right at the sidewalk. Residential districts tend to be set back farther. So that, either one of those two options are absolutely clear. Right-of-way is one specific thing, there's no interpretation there, and the building setback is another specific thing. Anything beyond that, it's a little bit hard. Some communities still do an average width over the lot, which you can, but it, it actually, it solves a problem that doesn't exist and creates a problem that didn't exist before you tried to solve it. So I guess my recommendation would be, unless there is a compelling interest in something different, set the minimum lot width at the right-of-way, and make sure that the entirety of the lot is never narrower, narrower than that. So I think you mentioned 70 feet was the minimum lot width in this district?
75, yes.
75 feet, thank you. So you can measure the lot, you can establish a minimum frontage of 75 feet and a minimum lot width of 75 feet. And that minimum lot width would mean at no point may the measurement between the two side yard lot lines be less than 75 feet.
So you're, so, if I understand, then what you're saying is that we just have to reword the sentence, the minimum width must extend to the right-of-way instead of the street? Is that what you're saying? Or how do, tell me exactly how to reword the sentence?
Well, let me, I guess, let me, the, the part that I may have missed here is, what is, what is the problem that is, that this section or this paragraph is attempting to solve? Is it just establishing, establishing a legal minimum lot width, or is there some other problem out there that?
There's another problem out there.
There isn't another problem out there. It's public opinion, and I see this getting us in trouble in several different ways. Unless it's uniformly applied, and we just, we just approved a different lot in a different neighborhood.
What, what, what lot and what neighborhood, what?
Um, when we approved the new lot on South Highland, I don't believe that that would meet the requirements right now. So what, what do we lean back on when someone comes forward and says?
It doesn't meet the minimum width, it's not 75 feet wide?
I don't, it was 75 feet wide. I don't think it met the 75 feet on the other side, though. I, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me.
At what, the depth, you mean?
Yes. In some, I mean, and this is my question, maybe this is a legal question, does it have to be uniform? That was a non-conforming lot. I asked the question, does Sister Bay allow flag lots? So that brings up another question, you know, we don't have a definition for that specifically in our zoning code either, when it, when it doesn't fall into a nice cookie cutter.
Well, just to clarify, that lot that you're describing is 122 feet in width.
Right, I, I had no question that it was wide enough.
We, we don't have, I don't think we have a depth. We only have
We only.
Lot air, lot area and width, right?
That's correct.
Does that answer your question or confuse you more?
I don't think I'm confused in the slightest.
Okay, then I'm confused.
We only have certain areas where we have large lots, and I, I can't think of anything in those. And I, I can't think of anything in those areas where the large lots could not conform with the 20,000 square feet. For a lot or two. So. You know, I'm not exactly sure why we're going through this exercise because the way it's being explained by Mr. Sanders, you can absolutely. Create lots in districts where we have larger parcels right now. So if it's going to become a matter of the public saying, we don't want these lots here. This is still allowing them. Which, you know, which should be what we're doing, I mean.
Right, I'm, I'm not trying to.
Talking about it the right way.
I, I'm not trying to necessarily outlaw anything. I'm just trying. Trying to make it cohesive. So that frontages are similar. And so that you don't have, let's say. Now, do you consider a flag, flag lot like in the shape of a flag? So you have something very narrow at the road and the bulk of the property is behind, you know, other lots that front.
Is that's a flag lot?
Okay, all right. So this is getting rid of flag lots.
It is.
Yes.
So is it really just then the wording here? So I, I think as, as Jeff, Jeffrey had said it. We're just saying that the minimum width will be measured. At a, at the right of way and.
Seventy-five feet of it. If, if the lot's much bigger, at least 75 feet of it must extend to the right of way.
I think the extent is what got me. I mean, we're just, it, the right of way has to be the minimum and at no point. In the lot can it be? And at any, and at no other point in the lot. That's it.
Can I ask Bo a question?
Yeah.
Bo, what about our lots that extend actually into the right of way? Because there are so many of them. When that is counted as actual acreage?
Yeah, so like an example of that would be the Castor Lot, I think, in the.
Oh, that went away. It all went away downtown. Remember, we've had, we had this discussion when the. The DOT redid the road, they bought everything. So there is at least downtown. Where they redid the highway, nobody owns any right of way.
That's just downtown, though.
Yes. Well, and it may be on Highway 57 or, or Highway 42 also. Whatever their road construction is, they bought all of that and cleaned it up. Because we talked about that, I think with. Dollar General property.
What about Village Roads and older lots, like things along Orchard and everything? Things along Woodcrest.
Orchard has big lots.
I'm trying to find an example to go off of. Well, it's also hard to use the Door County web map to do this because. It doesn't show right of way too mu, in, in every spot, it's the way that they did the map. Can you ask your question again, Mary Kay? I'm sorry.
What do we do in a situation where the actual lot itself goes into the right of way? Would it just become non-conforming? I guess that's the best way to ask it.
Hey Bo, if you go into the web map and you go to the roads option, you can select right of way and it'll display it on there.
I don't think it matters where to maybe try to answer your question, Mary Kay, from the way I perceive it. Is that the minimum width. Is located at the right of way. It doesn't matter where the right of way is. If it's in the road, if it's on the edge of the road. I don't think this is. Saying that that matters. It's wherever the right of way is.
Yeah, that's, that's a good way of putting it. It doesn't really matter if the right of way is in the road or whether it's, you know, backed into the parcel. It's still going to be according to this language, it's going to be located at the, at the right of way.
So where the actual right of way doesn't ma, is, doesn't matter, okay?
Correct.
So if you now just strike except with plan commission approval, have we cleaned it up?
But then you have here depth of lots. Was that in the, the opinion? Seen that I gave you my paperwork, Bo? Because what I said before, I don't think. We have depth.
Kind of gave me the strike, like where you wanted to add it.
Okay, and so that was, so that's actually adding something new then that we currently do not have, is that correct?
As, as the code reads right now, that would be correct. So that could come out.
Oh, I, I guess one thing I, I think I heard Mary Kay ask before is. I would like to know what, what legal opinion this is that you're basing this off of because not all legal opinions are equally valid.
Randy Nesbitz?
Okay, that, that helps. That, that, I, I didn't understand that before from what you did say.
Okay. You know, if this is some, if this verbiage. Is something that the plan commission would like to hear from. The zoning attorney, you know, we can certainly have Bo reach out to them and at our next meeting. We can readdress it in closed session. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I apologize. I just gave it inadvertent thumbs up. I'm not sure. And then I'll figure out some way of getting rid of it. But again, just as there, there's. As I understand it now, there's four, I guess, criteria related to dimensions, right? There's the overall width of the lot, the depth of the lot, the frontage of the lot, and then this concern about flag lots. And am I correct now that this language in red is primarily associated with. Precluding the creation of flag lots?
Yes.
So sometimes, and, and believe me, having dealt with the complexities of zoning too long, sometimes it's the simplest. Way, the simplest way of doing something is the best. And just put a statement in that flag lots are prohibited. And then define flag lots in the definition section and then you don't have to worry about any of this anymore. And there's a bunch of ways of defining a flag lot, but generally it's a lot that has a narrow frontage leading to a wider back, you know, that kind of thing. So then if, if that's the case, you establish the minimum frontage as 75 feet. The minimum. Average lot width or minimum lot width as 75 feet. And then the maximum depth as whatever you want the maximum depth to be. With the statement that says flag lots and lots not conforming with these dimensions are prohibited. And that way it's all very clear, very defined, very, not only legally defensible, but interpretable. By all the people who are going to interact, interact with that section, so.
Okay, so then I'm going to have Bo. Remove. Everything after lot dimensions and seeing that the village has hired you, Jeff. I am going to ask you to come up with those definitions for our next meeting. And the wording that we should insert here that would be legal according to your opinion on what you. And I like the idea that. Simpler is better and much more understandable. I'm, I'm great with that.
And we acknowledge you're not an attorney.
As does everyone I work with. That should not be a problem getting that done by next week. My schedule for the month of August is a little bit. Problematic. I have a client that represented 55% of my total workload. And that client was supposed to be over on June 30th, but they didn't find somebody to hire for the full-time position. So they asked me extend through July. Now they've asked me extend through August. Now they've found somebody, but until August 31st, I'm operating at a. Far above my capacity. So I will absolutely be able to get this. But if I may make a suggestion, one of the things that might be helpful for the plan commission. Is if I were to just go through this document and provide comments in writing regarding all the areas that are highlighted in red. That way there'd be something that all of you'd be able to review and have a discussion on. I don't, I would not be able to get that in seven days, but I certainly would be able to get it by the end of the month.
Well, that might be something we can do. We get through the transient lodging and conditional uses and we start talking about things other than that, you know, outside of that purview.
So what, what, did you create that whole heading that you just got rid of? I thought you were going to leave the heading, but get rid of the words.
Nope, I created all that. Hold on.
A lot dimensions. Okay. Can we just leave that there and get rid of everything else? At least that's where we know we will insert. Some, some verbiage like that Jeff's going to come up with.
There you go.
Okay, excellent.
Right, moving on. Trying to find highlighted sections here. So we're hitting the residential district section now.
Okay, so here we go. So then we are deleting in entirety item number two. And can you un-highlight that also? And that way we know we're done with it?
Yep.
I don't mean to rush you, maybe you were doing it, just tell me to.
So in doing a Zoom meeting in a very large document like this, it's kind of a burden on my tablet, so it's really slow.
Do, do we need to go up? And take out second dwellings?
Where is that? Number eight?
This is the, yeah, this is the whole section. This is the over, second dwelling overlay. So this is all coming out.
Okay.
Okay.
If it's any consolation, I know how it feels to put a lot of time and effort into creating something like that and then to have somebody say you can't do it and have to get rid of it. For what it's worth, I'm empathetic.
Okay, moving on. So this is our one single family residential. There's a highlight here. Says, where does it?
Yeah, I, I had that question last month.
Yep, so I did go through everywhere where accessory structure is in the code. And there is nothing that prohibits or nothing that limits districts to only having one accessory structure, at least from what I could find.
Oh, okay. So then you can get rid of my comment and highlight.
I'll go through that Denise, just because it takes a little longer. Just in the interest of time.
Oh, okay.
Okay, add legal verbiage, this is the same thing, so I'm just.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
Actually, I'm going to leave that highlighted. Just so I can go back to it. Okay. Then 900 square feet.
Right, this is a conversation that took us down. The good rabbit hole. And so this is the conversation and we are going to continue to have. Later. So all that. Highlight and comment then can go away. So Nate? Would you, how would you like to be tasked with writing down the things that we're going to get back to? So nothing gets lost.
Talking about like future work sessions?
Yes, yes, like what you just deleted. It's going to be a future conversation. So I'm asking Nate if he would be willing to take those notes.
Yeah, let's go, go back to that section. So at least in where we are at. Now here, I'll just follow you on here. What's great about this is if I click on your name at the top of OneDrive, I can see exactly where you are. I will.
Because I really liked your idea and a lot of this is going to go together and a lot of it then will be second and third conversations, so.
Okay. So there's Nate, that's what that is up there. Okay, moving down, we redlined this. So this is R2 multi-family. Scrolling through. This is the same thing, just so you know, building height and area standards put in the R2.
Are you un-highlighting?
Give me a moment here, Bo. I'm, I'm dumping this into another doc. I'm just grabbing snippets here. I can, I can find them in place later.
You need to leave it highlighted Nate, or are you okay on that?
Um, give me one more moment here. I've got my other doc open now. Now I can grab it and. Okay, I have that now.
I knew you were the right guy to ask.
It helps that I have three monitors going here.
I'm telling you, OneDrive is a magical tool for this. Okay, so this is where we got up to, just so you know, as we continue. So we did have this highlighted. I know this was a previous discussion that we were kind of going down the rabbit hole.
So future discussion, yeah?
So unit densities.
Make sure Nate gets it.
Okay, let's go back here.
And, and for the record, it should be noted, a lot of the numbers here in the sections, staff has to go back through and clean up. So don't worry about those numbers and those letters.
Well, I'm just going to be looking for fragments of these things and find it back in the doc later because it'll be.
Yep.
Unique enough things.
So this is R3 large lot residence. Under lot area width Nate, the accessory buildings shall exceed 14 feet in the height or the height of the principal building.
Are you selected on this now? Uh, why am I not getting? Go to your location. Okay, there we go.
Sorry, I didn't select it there.
Yeah.
I will.
What happens when you select it? Does then I can go to your location and I can grab it?
Okay. All right, so that accessory building language is. Part of that.
Bo, can I jump in on that for a moment?
Yes.
So that sentence is a bit problematic. No accessory building shall exceed 14 feet in height or the height of the principal structure. Somewhere in there it should be a whichever is less or whichever is more or something that gives some direction as to whether it's 14 feet.
No, but I can interpret that as saying. The height of the principal building, whichever is more.
So. Just to be clear, that would allow. A 35 foot tall garage if the house is 35 feet tall? Is that something the village would be comfortable with?
No.
So then we have to clean up that language because, or the height of the principal building could be a concern.
But this is something we're going to come back to and review later, correct?
Well, again, if, what, one, one way of dealing with, with it would be to establish. A maximum height for an accessory building and that number could be just, let's say 20 feet or 15 feet, doesn't really matter. However, no accessory structure shall be taller than the principal structure. And then you've said it, and if it happens to be a really low house, then they can't build a taller garage. And then you've said it, and if it happens to be a really low house, then they can't build a taller garage.
I, I guess what I'm saying goes, aren't we just dealing with the conditional use portion of this and kind of trying to get that completed tonight?
Yep, that was just a note, we'll go, we'll go back to that.
Well, if we do get to, both we ever, if we do get to the point of an audit, this, this is the kind of language that I would be finding.
Yep. And that's what we need to do, is simplify it. Okay. Okay, so this was another one on.
So again, taking Chair Burdo's comments to heart, what is the, like, what is the goal here? Is it to? Require bigger bedrooms? Because really from a zoning standpoint, it typically. Typically, you're looking at the footprint of the dwelling and not really worrying too much about. What's in that footprint, that's what the UDC, the Uniform Dwelling Code would get into. So if you were to say the minimum, minimum floor area of a principal residential building shall be nine hundred square feet. And just leave it at that, it would be up to the building inspectors to determine whether a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, nine-hundred-foot dwelling meets Uniform Dwelling Code?
No, it had nothing to do with sizes of bedrooms or anything like that. That was implemented a long, long time ago when. Three administrators ago, Bob Cuffin was here and we rewrote. The entire zoning code with him, we went page by page. And this was something that I believe was added back then, if Nate and Marge agree with me. It was a suggestion of, of that administrator at that time. And that's something that we're gonna come back to anyway and possibly getting rid of the minimum square footage.
I think we will get rid of it.
I think we will also Nate.
Just moving on, okay.
Wait, 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 wait.
On there.
There was, why is this in this section?
I thought I removed this already, so this is talking about the R1, R3 and CS1. When we are in the. R4 district.
Right.
We can just remove all of this. My guess is that was copy and paste it at one point.
Can you, you need to get rid of why is this in this section?
We, we don't have any R4 currently, is that correct?
There, there is no active R4, there's one section that is zoned. R4, but that's green space for an apartment that they won't develop on. Okay, CS1. We had indoor and outdoor recreation highlighted here, and that was before we defined it. That is in the definitions now. So if there's any concern of indoor and outdoor recreation, it would be in the definitions. Okay, special requirements, residence and then property line was added here. And then there's a guest contributor note that says, can we impose runoff regulations for farm animal waste?
Oh, that was mine, yeah. So what, what I saw here was navigable water. And if we've got farm animals. We should be. Putting in, unless it's covered someplace else, we should be not allowing runoff. We don't allow it in construction and we certainly shouldn't do it if you got a pen of horses. So on that sentence, Bo?
Yeah.
Where you've got property line underlined?
Someone added that.
Okay, so is that, so you're saying that's a sentence there that is, as it stands now?
Says.
It would need to be residential property line or residence apostrophe S. But residential property line is really what would make more sense.
Bo, how many, and this is just a general question, how many large? Developed residential lots exist in the village, and what I mean by that is acre, two acre or larger?
Well, this is in the CS1 district and from a geography standpoint. There's no CS1 that abuts a navigable water. And I don't foresee that changing.
So generally, this, this language, and this is remnant language from the nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties, and not the actual wording, but the sentiment here. Generally, the setbacks were from residential structures, kind of like firing a gun. You know, you're not allowed to fire a gun within whatever three hundred feet of an occupied structure, it was that kind of language back then. The, the child, the problem with using property line is what if it's a? Fifteen acre residential property, you could be. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet away from the house. But too close to the property line. That, if that makes sense, so the language historically was associated with the residence, not the property line. That doesn't mean you can't do it, but when, when it comes to. Regulating livestock waste into streams, I think both DNR and Door County would probably. Way in against the village's ability to do that, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay. This can go. Now we're in the B1 general business district. Denise, it looks like you highlighted designs that meet the architectural standards and enhance the village's historical, historic architecture.
Yeah, let Nate cut, uh, cut and paste that.
Just so you know, I added language that was similar to other sections, the C-section four thousand architectural guide, so it's consistent wherever you see that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a conversation I think we should have, because we too, we do have. Architectural guidelines and, and a lot of our structures are, are not needing it, so I wonder just. How important it is or if we need to review and change that, so another conversation for another day.
Hey, Bo, could you go back to the page we were on right before this one, just for a second?
Which one?
Stop right there. I think, alright, if you go down just a little bit. Okay, yeah, it's two seventy-six. Do we, why would we be concerned in the CS1? If an attached gra- garage dominates the front facade of the building?
We would not be.
So then that should come out of there, right? CS, that should not apply to CS1.
I would, I would agree with that. No, Bo, no, no, Bo.
Just CS1, just remove CS1 from there and CS, yeah. Remove that, yeah.
It'd have to be read like this.
R1, R2 and R3, yeah, or R1 and R3. Thank you.
Yep, going down to business districts. First highlight was marinas under permitted uses.
Well, and I think that, that was a conversation that we had. Cause the, the only B1 that abuts the water. Is Fred and Fuzzies.
That's not.
No.
Drew, I am looking here. Down Sunny Courts. There's a hotel, like, I'm gonna pull this up.
That's Country House.
Yep, Country House is B1. Yeah, those properties that they own are all B1.
Okay. Well, they have a huge bluff there in a stairway.
I think they'd have a hard time with DNR to get a marina.
So do we think that this should be deleted, seeing that there is no? Appropriate, appropriate place in B1 that a marina would? Be located anymore?
Yep.
That is incredibly valuable property and with engineering and construction with the way it's zoned, I, I don't think you can take that out.
I don't. I don't think we should, just because it doesn't seem like it's practical, let's just say magically they are able to put a marina there. I don't know, that would be, it would be a bad thing, it'd have to be done. Tastefully, of course, but I mean, that's what we have the rest of the zoning code for, I, I'd be inclined to leave it in there too. Just because somebody might think outside of the box.
Okay. Sounds good.
In twenty-five years. Do a big, I told you so Denise.
Oh, nothing, sorry. It's just, you scroll a little too fast, I.
Highlights, I'm trying to, you know, get, get us through this document here. So we highlighted on, under conditional uses, there's a couple things, non, non-village utility facilities.
Select that Bo, so I can jump on it.
I, I'm there.
Okay, got it.
I'm just gonna remove the highlights that we can come back to that discussion. And then seasonal employee housing, and then we added in existing structures as of six, three, twenty-one. And then it looks like Denise, you added Paula and shoots there.
Yes, because Paula has come to us and talked about moving. Some of the, the structures at Little Sister Resort out onto Highway fifty-seven. For workforce housing specifically. And I'm wondering, you know, if we keep this wording, I know why we put it in there. And it had to do with the conversation that we had about the Shopko building, that if somebody wanted to repurpose that. That could be a really great place for a lot of workforce housing. So, you know, what if somebody wanted to move a structure? That was not currently there, you know, this means that Paula would not be able to do that. And if that's our intent and we don't want her to do that, that's fine, but I just wanted to point that out. That the wording that we added. Unless we add more wording to allow it, that. That a structure could be, an existing structure could be moved there, which I know sounds ridiculous, but that's what she wants to do. And we talk about.
Nate thing, should, should we put this to the side, because this is a big discussion, especially in that area, which is starting to get so much discussion?
So should we remove then just? We should leave it as a conditional use and take out the, the red and revisit it? Okay. Good solution.
Actually, I'm gonna delete that right now.
Are you doing this on your? Your surface or on an actual computer?
I have to do it on my service. There we go. Okay. Then we, the next section that was highlighted is the setback area shall be a pervious surface, I think we wanted to reword that.
I don't think we were gonna reword it, it was just gonna be a topic of, of conversation, I thought. But we had made those other changes. From David's comments. A while ago.
Yeah, I can't spell, that's one of them.
Okay, so now we're moving into the B2 Business Transition District. Same thing here Denise, I just added that section to be consistent, so remove the highlight. Yeah, there was a question mark on marinas here as well.
Actually, there's a marina there right now.
Correct, so I guess that would stay.
Yep.
Okay, real estate offices was highlighted.
But I think we did, didn't we do professional?
No, in the B2, we didn't, we didn't.
So are we, okay, before you move on, so are we okay with deleting? Real estate offices from the transition district? Oh, why would we? I, I don't know that we are, would be. That might have just been highlighted. For, for all the districts and, and changing it to professional, so I don't think that should be deleted.
Well, let's make sure that it's the same as the other districts, then if we're using professional in other districts, that's what we should say here, I'd be inclined to say professional offices.
Actually, sorry about that.
Do we really want travel agencies listed?
That's a professional office, in my opinion.
Right, but I mean, that we would have to spell out travel agencies?
Not if we had professional offices.
We.
I'm agreeing with you Rob, that shouldn't be there, we should just have professional offices to cover all of it.
Good. So do you wanna take real estate offices out and just change it to professional offices?
Yes.
One F. Sorry about that.
Spell checks for it, Dan Rob.
Okay, moving down.
Travel agencies.
Yeah. I see.
And then please scroll back up to the top of that list when you're done with that, just to make sure that we have no other offices. That are in there that would fall under professional. Okay. Okay.
Okay, under conditional uses, this was another discussion that we had, it said revisit discussion and moved, uh, moved to permitted uses. Liquor stores in the B2 transition.
I, I disagree with Mary Kay, I don't think it should be permitted. I also don't think at this point in time in the transition, when there's still so much residential. That a liquor store, even under a conditional use, seeing that it has no teeth anymore, don't. I, if, if it starts developing. More towards business and less residential, I'd be in favor of it at that point in time. But not as things stand right now.
I never said it should be a permitted use, I simply said it should be left under a conditional.
Oh, okay, sorry. So we have two, two different opinions, the, the rest of the plan commission needs to weigh in, so we have. So we have two, two different opinions. The, the rest of the plan commission needs to weigh in, so we have, uh. A democracy.
I would like to see it struck from conditional uses.
I would like to see it struck.
Me too.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, hang on, where? Why is professional offices? As a permitted excess reuse?
Because I believe the intention is someone may have a residential property. They may have a secondary structure that they're using as a professional office.
Fortune teller out of the front living room, that kind of thing, Dave.
Well, I think the zoning ordinance has a definition for professional home office. It does not have a definition for professional offices, which is something that'll have to be added.
Okay, same thing. I'm just going to remove the highlighting here. Okay, so this was highlighted a while ago where it says, as shown above, I wasn't able to locate throughout the rest of the zoning code, what it's referring to.
I remember what it is.
Okay.
And I believe, and I'm gonna need some verification with the other old timers. Is that that was added when, um, we had that plan for, uh. Downtown. Uh, from Van de Wall and they were showing all the interior parking. Um, so you're building wood front on Bay Shore, there would be driveway access. There were shops behind the main drag, um, like, uh.
Like a muse.
Amuse, thank you, Marge. I could not remember the word. And so when that plan was out there, I think that's when this was added about talking about interior parking.
Right.
Yeah.
I recall that, that plan there.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm also a little amused that I, I think I was just lumped in with the old timers. And honored. Anytime you're putting a group with Marge, you're doing something right.
Highlighted before, and I think this was the first time we started to go through this. Uh, there was a question about should we eliminate Fee and Lou and then a yes? So I think that's for future discussion.
Yep.
So I'm just gonna delete this completely. Okay, this is the downtown business district now. Um, same thing here Denise, just added the same language from your highlight. Okay, we had removed both of these physical fitness centers and self-service laundry and dry cleaning. From the B three downtown business district. In the permitted uses, but we highlighted them to go back and for a discussion.
I don't think they're a very good use of B three. I don't think they're likely to come up, but I don't think it's the highest best use.
I tend to agree, Nate.
Um, I agree on the laundering track. I'm just going out, saying out loud here. I mean, if you had a Snap Fitness or somebody that wanna come in, but. That's just not. You know, I guess I'm oblivious.
Okay. Okay, this was another one for conversation, um, under building setbacks.
Is there a reason why we did not wanna say professional offices? In the last section and keep real estate offices and travel agencies? Or do we wanna make this similar to the other one and make fourteen professional offices and eliminate twenty?
No, I think in the downtown district, this was very specific. We already have real estate offices, so we did not wanna make them legal, non-conforming. Um, but. I think the conversation went just the same way as what Nate just said, you know. Uh, attorneys or other professional offices are not the best use of the B three district.
What about a, what about a, uh? Regional VRBO Airbnb office?
Not the highest best use down there.
Then maybe we wanna take out travel agencies, so we don't encourage somebody like that to.
Good point, Rob.
Yep.
Agree with you. Anybody else?
I, I agree.
Agreed.
Great perspective.
Okay, just going back here now under building setbacks. I think that's for a future conversation.
Did Nate get what about landscaping C H two?
Where this right there? Okay. I don't wanna point out that, that that was a great catch you had David with the. Impervious to pervious surface. We've had this code really backwards for a long time. I'm glad you taught that.
Okay, this is another one for a future conversation.
Is it? I think that's pretty important right now, in my opinion.
Well, again, Madam Chair, my concern here is what are the conditions under which the plan commission would grant a waiver?
We always have. If, if they have come up with documentation from, uh, the adjacent property owner. That's a letter that says they have no problem, which just happened a couple of months ago with the downtown parcel. We have said, okay, um. I have, I now have a problem with it. Um, it was for some history, Jeff, this was implemented into the code. So that, um, are you familiar with Third Avenue in Sturgeon Bay? You know, it's an old historic district. The buildings are on the sidewalk. The sidewalk is pretty deep. But all the brick and stone buildings attached to one another. There's, you know, the commercial on the first floor, residential on second and third. And, um, basically they all have flat roofs. And so when we were, years ago, when Sister Bay was not having any development. And we were trying to spur it on with different things and changes that we made in the code. We, we loved the idea of a zero side setback. Thinking that people would butt their buildings up to each other, but then you cannot usually have a pitched roof. You have a flat roof. That is not the way downtown has developed. Um, and I would like to see it go away. Nate, I think his argument was that, well, someday it might, or there still might be the opportunity for that to happen. So, I would kinda like to, to settle this, um. Now, instead of a future conversation.
So I, I guess what I would say is if these people are going to agree to it, they're gonna have an answer for the, the water runoff. That's going to be something that perhaps we're not aware of yet, or that hasn't, hasn't been done. So I, I would like to leave that to the property owners so that we can, if we don't, if we maintain this minimum setback, we're going to effectively. Encourage sprawl in a very limited way, granted, but you're going to push buildings further apart and you're gonna have less of a sense of downtown. Um, than you potentially could. And I do think there's some development that'll happen along Bay Shore Drive. You know, from Mill Road North, that could take advantage of that. And I think that just because I, I hear what you're saying, that there are some serious challenges with that and the, the roof and the, the stormwater runoff. But I think that that's something that, that if somebody wants to, they could come up with a reasonable solution. And if. Any reasonable business owner that's gonna build property there is going to have an answer to that before they sign off.
But see, and I'll use the example and not that Jeff will know exactly, you know, what I'm talking about. But just with Gary Wiesa's development and, um, Todd for Zoney's vacant parcel, you know. Their blacktop basically went to the property line or close to it. And so there is absolutely no green space, even though they agreed for the zero. Setback, I mean, is there a way that, that we can word it that? If the, if the development buildings. If the buildings that are being developed attach to each other, that's when you can have a zero setback?
The building is abut.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at this lot right now and I see what you're saying there. Cause that, that's not, the goal is not to have, to do away with a side lot to have parking there.
Correct.
The goal is to have buildings abutting, so I, I, I'd ask Jeff is. Understanding that's our goal, what do you think a good, intelligent way that's going to be in compliance with state laws? To accomplish that?
Um, there are quite a few ways, but it. I, I'm almost certainly missing something here, because all of you know so much more about the history here than I do. The first problem is anytime I see may grant a waiver, that language should be stricken. The word may should never appear in a zoning ordinance, ever. It should be all shall or make it go away. Um, because it just, it, it's too interpretive, but to, to Nate's question. Um, zero lot line development is what you're talking about and is, if the concern is that. Somebody builds a structure. In the zero lot line setting that has a roof that could negatively impact an adjoining property owner. That to me doesn't seem like a zoning issue as much as a building code issue. And I would imagine the building inspectors would address that during building inspection. Um, it just doesn't feel like a zoning matter to me. That's the best I can give you based upon.
I, I don't have faith that, I think it is a zoning code issue, because in the zoning code. Each parcel has to take care of the water on their own property and cannot. Have it go on to the neighbor's property. That is written in our code.
I, that appears in a number of codes. It's. Almost impossible to achieve. Particularly in any built environment, out in, out in a rural setting, out in a subdivision setting. With lots that are an acre larger, it's possible in a, in a downtown setting like the village of Sister Bay, it's. I mean, it's almost impossible, you know, under what rain event, for instance. So if it's a half an inch in an hour or an inch in an hour, there's no property that can keep all that on site. It's just not, I think an engineer would say that's not possible, but, but again, I. Aside from the architectural element of it, which certainly is zoning code has the authority. And I would argue the responsibility to weigh in on the appearance of structures. If this is a situation where somebody builds a structure next door to a lot that negatively affects the adjoining property owner. If it's not something that would be caught in the building code, and I'm pretty sure it would, because I think the commercial, I'm not a building inspector, but I'm pretty sure the commercial code addresses that. Um, it would be between those two property owners to address. You know, for instance, if I put a big hill out in my backyard and it floods my neighbor's backyard. I'm legally culpable for the damage that occurs. So I, I, I just, my main concern here when I jumped in was the may grant a waiver. That's the part that's.
My question is this. Nate, what I'm hearing, when you mentioned there's an opportunity for what you're. Just what you're describing, north of Mill Road downtown. It sounds to me like what you're prognosticating is that if. Something would ever change with the Sister Bay Bowl property and somebody wanted to put something in. Like the old walkway shops there, where it was a bunch of stuff connected by a. Flat roof that goes all the way across.
Rock to the north.
Oh, to the north. Oh, all right. Well, the same thing. Are you talking about something like the old walkway shops?
Um, it, it, I don't know if it'd be the old. I guess shops, or I mean, I, I guess there's, there's just so many things that could happen out there. We do need to put some constraints on it, but let's put the fewest constraints possible. Uh, especially when we can leave room for developers to be creative and.
Here's.
I guess it also is gonna build, in my opinion, a, a more cohesive downtown. If there's less gaps between it, I mean, I, I still think back to. Miles Danhouse, and I'm shaking my fist at you, Miles, for that article, the missing teeth article. That was maybe not so helpful at the time, but I think that that's something I've always thought about. And to, to make that downtown feel. I don't know, more like downtown.
Vibrant.
Okay, on that note, on that note. What makes me uncomfortable about saying leaving a provision. To allow someone to drastically change the look of downtown. That is counterintuitive and against what we told Wissa and Uncafer and everyone. On that recent development proposal where we basically said. You know, you're not making this look enough like downtown Sister Bay. You're not making this look enough like Door County. You're referencing how what you're bringing us. Looks good in Green Bay or Appleton, and we sent them back to the drawing board because it did not look. Like similar developments in Sister Bay. And positively and productively, they came back with revisions to make it look more like downtown Sister Bay, and it was approved.
Let's take a step back from that, because I don't think any of us wanna see any more transient lodging in downtown Sister Bay. I like where Nate is going, and you also have to remember that the on-deck building has a flat roof. It is one of the most attractive buildings in downtown Sister Bay. So I think this argument is going in a couple of, not argument, but discussion is going in a couple of different directions. Right now, with the Frisoni lot on the market and with the, it, it's not the Castor building, but let's call it that. Also on the market next door, um, you know, you do have. A large area for development, considering the scope of downtown. I, I, I don't think we should change this at this point in time. I am in agreement with Nate.
I, I think that the one change that I, to Denise's point, that we should have it be abutting buildings. I think that would, that would be a positive change, in my opinion.
That, and that would solve my whole issue, and then we will grant a, a waiver. Where the adjoining property owners enter into this agreement as long as. The building's abut. I'm very happy with that.
So drop adjacent, put in budding and go up and take May out and make it shell.
Okay, hold on.
That does it.
Oh, hold on.
Mary Kay, what's the caster building?
It's the old Betty Wiltsey building.
The little green building on the corner of, of.
No, it's, it's gray now.
Oh.
Part C.
State office.
I'm, yeah.
How did we wanna change this again? Sorry, I just wanna make sure I get this right the first time. Plan commission, so just changing it to shall grant a waiver?
And then down below where it says for the adjacent buildings, they have to be abutting for a budding buildings only. For.
Yeah. Both parties. Right here, hold on, say, oh, for the adjacent buildings. Okay, what are we doing with this?
Abutting buildings.
Okay.
That's not clear to me. I'm sorry. I don't know that it's clear and concise.
Do you want instead of the word the for creating a budding buildings only, since we are talking about future development?
Right, yeah. Right for. I just want to make sure that the abutting, but I suppose it's the it's a zero setback, so you are talking about the property line.
I'd be happier if it said if. Both parties agree instead of both parties can agree. That might be a minor wording thing, but it would be a little clearer to me.
It's more positive.
So how do you want to say that both parties can agree?
If both parties agree.
Agree. And creating an example, Bo is as simple as taking a picture of Third Avenue in Sturgeon Bay.
I'll do that. That's no problem. Um, planning unit development, this was.
Conversation for another day.
Okay, the sections you wanted us to check on. Um, I did add that note. These are referring to other sections in B three. C four is permitted accessory uses and H is special standard uses in B three. Um, I would just recommend leaving these section referrals as they are.
Okay.
Okay, fourteen feet was highlighted in pedestrian amenities. An additional fourteen feet of landscaping. I think that was for future discussion.
Um, because well, that I think that had to do with we have six foot sidewalks, correct? And also in the B three, it talked about. I think you need. Eight, a minimum of eight feet of landscaping. Does that sound familiar to anybody? No, okay. Okay, our front yard setbacks in downtown is twenty feet from the face of the curb. Oh, that's where the fourteen feet comes from. So it's a six feet, a sidewalk. And fourteen feet of landscaping. So I would say we could leave that the the way it is now.
Okay, we had mix use development allowed highlighted, um, and then we redlined all of this. And then we changed the language here. So do you want me to just remove the highlights? I think we took care of this.
Yes.
I guess I I'd like to hear Jeff's opinion on that fourteen feet, if that's. Something that we this for the B three, if that's something that makes sense, or if that's a lot of setback for the B three district.
It seems to be a lot of setback, but I don't have a comment beyond that. I assume you reasoned and discussed it and it came to that number, so I don't have comments beyond that.
I I'd like to discuss that further some other time.
Okay. Did you cut it?
I did.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward, um, once again, the removal of fee and Lou. Um, that's for a future conversation. We already have that one. And then common areas was highlighted.
Denise, are you going to have staff go through this entire document to remove May and create shell? Because it's all over the place.
No. I I am not going to. I think we will take that under advisement. When um, we after we tackle these. Other things that Nate is cutting and pasting, and we start from page one of the zoning code. When we hire a company or an individual to help us recreate the whole document uh, um, according to. Um, new rules, regulations, laws, statutes, whatever it may be. But I think that because I don't think every place it says may. A shell will be appropriate. So I think that's a conversation we have to have as a whole group.
That's like legal one oh one, though.
I I get that, and I heard what Jeff said, but you know, I. I am certainly not comfortable in in doing that. Without without reviewing each and every one and what it means. Because maybe some would be deleted instead of being turned into shell, I guess, depending upon. Where it is.
That's probably a study session or two, just doing a find and. You know, find and then replace as we all agree upon it. I hear what you're saying Denise, because you don't know what that is. It's not as simple as just find and replace.
Right, and I mean, it's the same thing as, you know, we got a a red highlighted conditional use copy of the zoning code. The same thing can happen, you know, where every may is also highlighted in in red.
Okay, Nate, did you get?
Just a question, thank you, because it's they're liberally sprinkled throughout.
Yeah, yeah.
Grab this though.
Okay. This is on, this is in definitions now. This is condominium residential.
This is what David found at last week's meeting, and my suggestion is. We recreated under residential condominium, but we leave condominium residential in there and say C residential condominium.
Okay, so why don't I delete it here? And then when we get to the R is add residential condominium. Okay, and then under condominium transients, we have talked to Randy highlighted.
Yeah, did we ever, did we ever get? Maybe Jeff should chime in here. Why? Why did we want to talk to Randy about that?
Add under transient condominium.
Right, the same as condominium residential, it's just the same.
Did are, did we have this before? Because isn't this a hotel condominium?
A hotel condominium is different than transient lodging.
Okay.
There are two different definitions.
Okay.
Okay, so we want.
Craft fair bit, Bo, you just went past it. You need to fix that sentence. It's either a temporary event at which. Or you need to change that to a temporary event where.
I don't have my track changes on.
While we're scrolling, Mary Kay, I just want to say you were really polite to the historical figure. Who wrote this to say the maze were sprinkled. It was. In some places.
And so excluding overhangs is highlighted. I think that was a future conversation.
No, no, we had that conversation.
Alright, so we can just.
It needs to.
Yeah, should include overhangs on front setback. And front.
Yeah, so either, right, so we need to move it. Remove it excluding overhangs. And should include overhangs.
So all you could do is.
And then Denise, just a question, why did we take awnings out? Because that would be an overhang. Or did we feel it was already categorized as an overhang?
I'm trying to remember that.
I'm not sure if this was the reason, but awnings are typically not included as overhangs in the definition. Um, overhangs typically are considered architectural accoutrements, whereas an awning is an ad is an added structure. That might be why.
Can we write down architectural accoutrement and use that a few times in here?
I like that. Man, I just put that in my notes and. Yeah. And I don't know, the word just looks funny if I just spelled it really bad. No, I spelled it right.
Okay, loading area, we added semi tractor trailers, but we highlighted it.
Yeah, I think we can get rid of the highlight. Oh, just because we haven't, okay, yeah, we just haven't gone through the definitions. So most likely all of the highlights, we we've already talked about all this. We did this one on our first first couple of meetings, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Definitions was one of the first things we tackled.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, are you basically saying that a loading area is only for semi tractor trailers? It's not for other large trucks that don't meet that qualification?
Loading space says for all types of vehicles. Loading area. So loading space and loading area are a little different. Because loading area specific to semi tractor trailers. To a public street. Well, accessible.
I think that to inform that, or maybe to give some background to that question, you'd have to do a word search. Throughout the document for loading area to see how it applies. I suspect there are going to be situations where. The village would prefer to include be more expansive than just semi tractor trailers. You think of some of the very, very large. Delivery trucks out there now.
In our index, it said loading area is on six different pages.
Jeff, to your point about. Specifying the tractors or the type of vehicles better, does any. Code you're aware of do that by a vehicle, a vehicle weight?
Um, not that I'm aware of, they typically include it in a as a category and I do, you know. Two minutes from now, when it comes to my mind, I'll interrupt and tell you, but it would identify a category of delivery vehicles. In excess of feet or something like that. It's usually, I haven't seen it regarding weight. It's usually about the size of the structure or the size.
Or dimension, yeah, where you would say a dimension rather than. Describing a type.
Correct, and I I know there's a category, you know, for instance, there are category L, category N, category M vehicles out there that. You know, heavy vehicles and school buses and all that kind of stuff. I think there's a term. I know there's a term that's going to come to me, and when it does, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Mobile food establishment was highlighted, and that was highlighted in July.
I think it's because you might have just. You wrote all of that, and I don't know that we just necessarily ever got into an in-depth conversation about the wording. And not that we have to.
Okay. Do you want me to just remove the highlighting or remove?
I I think remove the highlighting.
Uh, mobile home was highlighted, and then it says this has not been addressed.
Yeah. Don't they still make mobile homes? Why does it have to be manufactured before nineteen seventy six? I just don't even understand that this the definition.
Well, some places I and I might be wrong here, but some places like. Like uh camping RV parks, they won't allow mobile homes that are made prior to a certain date, just for aesthetic purposes.
I mean. We don't allow them any, aren't they zoned out? They're not allowed anywhere, are they?
I don't believe so.
Justin Chad's driveway.
So where? And again, it says mobile home is on. Five different pages in the code. And mobile.
Why don't we just pull out? We did, we just designed, so right after mobile home means a vehicle. Designed to be towed, so just pull out when it was manufactured.
But if I can jump in on this one, this one's a pretty easy one. This definition is no longer applicable. Um, there's an updated definition for mobile homes that we can just plug in.
Excellent. Okay.
And where would we find that, Jeff?
I'll provide it to Bo. I mean, I can read it here right now if you're in, it's about the same length, so I'm not sure.
Well, that's okay. You just provide it, Bo.
Uniform building code.
There's a specific state statute. It's chapter one oh one point nine one sub ten that covers it, and it has some of this language in it. Alright, I'm just gonna leave this highlighted, Jeff, so that when you send it to me, I can just replace all this quick. I'm sending it to you right now. I have to stop sharing for a second to go into my emails.
Oh, you can do that after, oh. Or not, that's okay.
Did you send it, um, Jeff? I did, it's on its way. Right, perfect, thank you.
So about what page are we on? Were there about fifty two pages, Bo?
Yes.
And definitions were one of the last things, then after that, there were just some handwritten notes.
Yep.
So normally we stop at eight o'clock. I think we should be able in the next fifteen minutes to to finish up, if that's all right with everybody, that we just finished this document and then call it a night.
I'm good. I'll step away for about two minutes here.
Okay.
Okay, I'll change the uh, let's see.
I so lost my Zoom screen.
So Jeff, when we go down just a, a little bit there. For instance, modular unit motor home, does either of those strike you as something where there would be a new definition like there was for? Mobile home?
Um, excuse me, if you could sort of roll down a little bit. I'm just reading modular unit right now, factor family.
Oh, that wasn't highlighted. It didn't track the change that we changed the definition.
You are correct.
My concern, I guess when you said modular unit, I wasn't sure that you weren't talking about a manufactured home. But I think this modular unit language is fine.
Okay, thank you.
Probably do want a definition for manufactured home, though, in here.
My house was a modular unit. It showed up on. Three semis.
Okay, this is just highlighted. I know we went through this. You asked us to make sure we were current with state statute.
Yep. Wait, wait, wait. Didn't.
Where do you want me to go?
Nursing home. So. Okay, never mind, it's fine.
Okay, rear setback. Should include overhangs. Do you want me to do the same thing?
Right, you just, no, 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 no. You need to keep excluding where it is, cause it ex- excludes gutters and we're removing awnings. You need to move the word overhangs up a sentence where it says including impervious surface. Comma. Overhangs excluding the other things.
Okay, say that, so including impervious surface, comma, excluding overhangs?
No. Comma, overhangs. Cause we're including overhangs. Just type the word overhang.
It's right there.
I, I know, type it where your cursor is. And now delete it after the word excluding. But excluding needs to, is not stricken because we are excluding gutters. Does everybody agree with me that that's? Okay.
Could we hold there for just a moment? Again, I think this is one of the situations where there might be a clear way of, of stating what I believe it is. What I believe the plan commission's intent is. So, well, I tell you what, let me, what, what you're trying to, I think what the plan commission is trying to say here is that. The principal structure includes overhangs, but it's the impervious surface. Are you referring to like an attached patio or a deck or something? Is that what that language implies?
We, we added that because this had to do with, um, once again, the, our conversation with the zero. Side yard setbacks. Now this is the rear setback. That they cannot have impervious surface within the rear setback, whatever that is.
Yeah, something tells me that's problematic again. So the rear setback applies to every single zoning district, correct? The way it's, I mean, the way it's intended, the rear setback would be a residential property of. Commercial property, industrial property, whatever the case may be, correct?
Yes.
So if you're saying there's no impervious surface located within the rear setback. And it's measured from the principal structure, you could not have a detached garage in the backyard. You could not have a gazebo. You could not have a lawn, garden shed or a swimming pool or.
No, you can have all those things. It just needs to meet the rear setback. It has nothing to do where a, a principal structure would be. So if I, I have a home and then I build a garden shed. I have to, and there's let's say a concrete patio all around it. Well, that concrete patio needs to be inside the rear setback.
For, I'm sorry, I apologize. I was, I'm, I'm reading the rear yard.
Oh, rear yard. Okay, I was on rear setback.
No, and I, I apologize, I may, I may have said setback. The way this is written right now. Well, first of all, it could be much clearer if the intention is to not allow him, not to allow an impervious structure, impervious surfaces. Within the minimum rear yard setback. Um, what is the rear yard setback in the residential districts?
Thing, I'll look in R one, I think it's. Is it twenty?
Forty feet from the rear, rear of the property line.
Forty?
Yep, forty feet.
And then, so. Again, you, you absolutely, a plant commission has the authority to do this. Um, that it, it is very, very restrictive. So you're basically saying that, that forty feet of the backyard can have effectively no structures. And I don't mean no garages, I mean no structures at all, nothing that would meet the definition of impervious. If you look at the definition of accessory structure in your ordinance, it would cover. Birdhouses, doghouses, um. You know, play apparatus, all kinds of stuff. And I think the, this, this language, if the intent is to. Well, I'm not sure what the intent is, I guess.
No, the rear, no, this is for the, for the principal structure. Rear yard. The second sentence, the side latelines and the rear foundation wall of the principal structure.
Right, and it says including impervious surface. So my question was. Is it impervious surface associated with the principal structure or is it impervious surface in general? If it's impervious surface associated with the principal structure, are we talking about something like a, a paved patio or brick pavers? Or, you know, a raised deck or, I don't know, what is that, the intent here?
I think when we added this, um, it had more to do with specifically. The B three district, the B two district, where lots were smaller and we were seeing people push out. You know, because if you, it did not have so much to do with residential, um, if. The rest of the commission agrees with me, because if you look at the rear setback in B three. It's very, very different and I don't, and seeing that's one of the things. In a general definition which pertains to all zoning districts. This would have been an unintended consequence. A rear yard setback. Is six feet in the B three district and that's what we were talking about. So maybe what we need to do is exclude. Or simply state that it's for B two and B three only. Because those are the small lot sizes. B ones are not, and, and residential is not necessarily such an issue. But that's a good catch.
My, I, yeah, I apologize. This is, it may take me a moment to try to articulate the problem with this, the way it's written right now, so. Um, during the Reagan administration, there was this thing called the Bradley Fighting Vehicle that was proposed for the army and its original design. It was going to be this incredibly effective lightweight infantry vehicle. But over time, they added a bigger gun to it and they added more armor to it and they added more technology to it and they kept on adding all these things to it. Till it got to the point where it was totally ineffective and it was one of the worst boondoggles in United States military spending history. A rear yard should be defined incredibly simply with no prohibitions in the definition of rear yard. And then within the body of the zoning ordinance and the specific districts, that's where you put the prohibitions again. So let me give you an example. Um, this is just one of the zoning ordinances I administer, but it's very common. A rear yard, a yard extending across the full width of the lot, the depth of which shall be the minimum horizontal distance between the rear lot line. And a line parallel thereto through the nearest point of the principal structure. So what the rear yard definition should do is just identify what the rear yard is. But then don't build any, what you can and can't do into there. That part is in the body of the districts. So then when you go to the B two district or B three, and I apologize, I don't remember if those are the ones you mentioned. But if you have requirements, um, or prohibitions for rear yards, put them in those districts and you'd say. You know, section sub B, the rear yard in the B three district shall include or shall not include or may require it. I'm kidding, take the mail away. Um, so do you see where I'm going? The, the definition right now should be very simple and just say. This footprint of a parcel is what is defined as the rear yard as opposed to the side yard as opposed to the, you know, street yard or front yard.
Okay, so that, alright, so.
A little bit.
This is something that we will have to work on, um, that we will skip over for now, but highlight. Because it's not just, it's not probably just rear yard and rear setback. It's also probably side yard, side setback, front yard, front setback in all of the districts. Where we will have to go and implement the very specific wording then into those zoning districts. And then shrink. These, what, what they are under the definitions. Okay.
Jeff, Pentagon Wars was a, a great movie. I've not read the book, though, but I caught your reference.
A vehicle was portrayed better in stripes.
The EM fifty urban assault vehicle still stands as the finest piece of military engineering today.
Okay.
Uh, residential, you were gonna add residential condominium.
I just wanted to go back and I wanted to get. Okay.
We'll have to do front also.
Okay. So we want to add residential condominium?
Correct.
How do we want to define that?
We'll just cut and paste from up above and we can do that later. And then we also needed to add.
Condominium.
Correct. When we get there.
Oh, we'll get there.
Is the term residential, maybe that's what you're thinking about doing here is providing a definition for the term residential condominium? I apologize if you said that and I missed it.
Yes, we have it right now under condominium residential, which, um. David was the only one who caught that on a project that we were dealing with last week. So we need to put it where most people would look for it.
So again, I. If, if somebody, if, if, if I own a single family dwelling in the village. And some of my neighbors own their own single family dwellings and ten of us say, you know something? We're tired of mowing our lawn and we're tired of shoveling the driveway. We would like to form a condominium association. And then the condominium association would own our property, but we would own our structures. Is that? How would that fit under this residential condominium?
This document does not address land only condominiums in the way you're describing it. And everybody does understand that condominium is only a form of ownership. However, it is generally addressed. Um, or, or defined. Here in a manner. Kind of after the fact, because development is happening so rapidly. So that's a huge different discussion for the future. Thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, so we are at the bottom here. This is the list of, uh, items. So future discussions. And then these were some of the notes that we had that I addressed as we went through this. Nate, did you want to copy these into, um, that other document for future discussion?
No, well, we cannot legal opinion on THC sales and adult stores. That, that has to be done now. I mean, maybe not tonight. Because we're waiting to hear back and maybe Jeff can give us his opinion on that. Um, the waterfront overlay district certainly is a future discussion.
The only illustration I have to add is for that, um, third avenue.
Okay.
I can just remove this.
Okay.
Are, just a question, are we gonna conclude tonight knowing what the pre-work materials are for next week? Or knowing how soon we might get them?
So I'm gonna throw out there, I am not gonna be able to make next week.
And David is not gonna be able to make next week.
Well, I mean, we just cleaned up the cumulative documents minus, you know, very small pieces. That staff has direction on. Do you want this to be presentable for a public hearing in the future?
I, I, I think we're almost there. I think the next meeting, you know. We'll go through it with a, a finer tooth comb. I'm gonna request, um, a hard copy. Um, so I can sit on my couch and, and go through it, um, better with a red pen. Um, you know, Jeff was gonna get us, um, a. Some verbiage on flag lots and then we have those other definitions, rear, side and front to change and incorporate those into the district. And basically. You know, hopefully we should have a legal opinion on the THC sales and adult stores. Because Jeff, from my understanding, you cannot zone out any particular, um. Business, you have to have a place for them and, uh. I'm sorry, my video was off. And so in, in our, in our different zoning districts where we have permitted uses and to shrink the list. We got rid of a lot of specific retail stores and added general retail. Um, which would, you know, encompass, you know, a lot of things that, um, were in the list that really don't need to be. Because it was never an inclusive list to begin with. But by doing that. You know, what do we do with? THC sales and adult stores? Do we just allow them in, in every, you know, a, a business district? Or do we choose one? Because from my understanding, we cannot zone them out and unless we specify specifically where they go and where they don't. They, somebody could make the case that they are general retail.
So I, the, the adult stores is easy, so I'm gonna put that off for a moment. Um, THC, are we talking about like CBD oil? Or are we talking about something that's actually? Violation of state law. Cause you can't sell, to my knowledge, you can't sell THC.
Not now, but we're trying to incorporate something for when that does happen.
There's, you can sell Delta eight right now for, at least until they fix that loophole.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's crazy, absolutely crazy.
So that's a, the, the THC sale, to my knowledge, are no constitutional protections for THC or CBD or anything like that. So that you can prohibit outright if you want.
Or, or can we just not have it in there at all, seeing that it's not currently legal to sell? At this point.
I would, I would advise against putting anything in your ordinance as a permitted or conditional use. That's not actually a lawful use. First of all, but, but big picture is, um, so there's a. So there's a Supreme Court case in 1992 called Foresight versus Babel that basically, forgive me if I referenced this the last time I may have. But if you, if you have a zoning ordinance that's based upon listed uses, permitted and conditional uses, any use that is not listed is by omission prohibited. So if you don't mention THC sales, but you have a general retail category, the presumption is that THC sales or maybe scratch that CBD oil because it's an allowable retail thing in the state of Wisconsin, that would be allowable in that general retail. On the other hand, if you have a general retail category, but you specifically prohibit CBD sales, that's fine too.
Okay, I just think we were trying to, you know, think forward while we were having this discussion. So I guess that's, you know, we can put it on the list then for future, a future conversation then on what zoning district we might think when it become, I'm sure it's going to happen. We just don't know when. What zoning district that that would be appropriate in. And so then you said adult stores was easy.
Yeah, easy in, in the zoning standpoint and just the worst thing ever to administer. So the three most difficult things to administer in zoning ordinances are everything to do with protecting First Amendment rights. So it's religious land use and institutionalized persons act. It's sign regulations and it's adult entertainment. And adult stores and other forms of adult entertainment have been deemed over and over again as constitutionally protected free speech. So what the attorneys I work with, including the attorney Beau met with, all recommend is develop one, put it in one district as a, as a conditional use and you meet the constitutional requirement. So generally they'll put it in a heavy industry district. If you have, and I know there isn't a heavy industry, at least to my knowledge in the village, I may have missed it. But you put it in the district where you want to stash stuff that you don't want to be anywhere else.
DS one.
And what is that?
The countryside, large lot, 10 acres.
I'm, I'm going to say also, don't put this on the 57 corridor. It's not a good idea.
What is it is, and I think this is where Chair Burdo was going. If you don't list the district within which adult entertainment, adult entertainment is permissible, then it is permissible in every district that has
Right.
or any business use.
So I mean, I don't believe it's appropriate for downtown. I don't believe it's appropriate for the transition district and that only leaves the B one, which are the corridors.
Or you create a brand new district that doesn't exist on the map yet.
I was just going to say you create your own district for that.
Don't call it an adult entertainment district.
Oh.
Call it a, you know.
NC seventeen district. Call it I two, industrial heavy.
Okay, I'd like to hear what Jeff says.
That's, I think where Beau is going is that's, you'd, you'd want to create, first of all, again, there, there there's so much court case law on zoning ordinances and zoning districts, right? 100 years in Wisconsin. So if you create a district that's called the I two heavy industry district and the only use in it is not a heavy industrial district, somebody wants to do heavy industry in that use is going to be able to do it. So if you do create a district that has a moniker called heavy industrial, make sure there are at least, there is at least one heavy industrial use that's permitted by right in that district. Now, it doesn't have to be an iron smelting facility, but it would have to be something that would generally constitute the heavy industry. And then.
We don't want that anywhere in the village. We just got rid of a mine. So there has to be another alternative.
Other, right, that's, that's what I'm getting at. If you do create a district, we just have to make sure it's a district that doesn't create the unintended consequence of allowing something you don't want. That might be even worse than having the use that you're intending to stash in that district.
Could it be?
Information Freedom District.
Could it be an overlay district? You know, that takes a certain aspect of the B one, which is the highway 57, highway 42 corridor. Could it be an overlay district that's, that it's certain lots in, in that, instead of the entire district?
My knowledge, no.
Okay.
The, the attorney that Beau talked with, spoke with regarding short term rentals, wow. He quite literally wrote a paper that received national attention on zoning for adult entertainment. So I would recommend you contact him or run that question by him.
Okay, then let's get his opinion on that. Okay. Okay.
So then will the work for next Monday be the 50 pages going through it again, Denise?
Yes.
Okay, Beau, can you get me a copy printed out by Janelle or somebody tomorrow?
Yeah.
Hard copy? Thank you.
Yeah, but you may not, you may not have all the changes that you need to make, Beau, done by tomorrow.
Nobody.
So, just so Rob understands that.
Well, it, the, yeah, if you want a hard copy with all the changes, the earliest I could get that to you would be Friday because that's when we'd have to get it out.
Okay.
You know, we are running on, you know, weekly meetings, so.
Okay.
And, and Friday, yeah, I, I would, I need a hard copy also, I'm sorry to say.
I also want a physical copy while I'm doing this, just so I can make, make them all at once.
I do. Thank you.
I do that.
Okay, and I actually think I need to take three more minutes here to talk about discussion on temporary tent permits. Changing the ordinance to read on specific events and not general smaller events. I had sent Beau a photo of the Door Hotel a couple of weeks ago that had two tents set up, Hacienda Brewing, I think that was, it started with an H. And Door County Brewing, they also had huge banners and the tent canopies also had signage on them. Chris Schmelz had received a permit from the village for Brick Party by the Bay and Plain, and yeah, Plain Air. And so Beau had said that when he had given the permit, he had specifically talked to Chris about, you know, no signage, I'm just giving you permits for these tents to operate on these couple of days. And, you know, nothing really was adhered to. And so I think that when we allow other things like this, that it should be Fall Festival. Whatever other big big festivals, Marina Fest, Freedom Fest, I think those were the three. Those are the three, pardon?
The Fine Arts Festival?
Uh, maybe, maybe not. Okay, Fine Arts Festival. That they should be more of a village wide event than one activity going on. You know, at the village hall like the Brick Party. That does not constitute a festival. It's a single event because we could, every time something like this happens, you know, Door Hotel started, the next thing you know, somebody else wants to put up a tent and it turns into something once again of unintended consequences. So this was Beau's suggestion and I think it's a really good one that it really, you can only have a tent when there is a village wide festival.
Can this be posted for a public meeting actually? Because Plain Air is a multinational, multicultural event. I don't know why you'd not want the village to benefit from something like that.
I'm not saying that we would exclude Plain Air. That's under the umbrella of Sister Bay Advancement, I think. But I don't, I don't know that we want, you know, want everybody setting up tents to, when Plain Air is going on and that it becomes a Marina, a Marina Fest only out on on the corridor. I mean, if you think that we need to talk about this more, that's fine and that could be a discussion for next Monday. If it's not an easy decision and everybody needs to think about it and then debate it with each other, that's fine. But I just kind of wanted to, in my opinion, nip something in the bud and redefine what it is that we really think is allowable. So can we just have that as an agenda item then for Monday also?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then Nate, you cut and copied the waterfront overlay district.
Um, yeah, I've got that. That's the last bit I've got on here.
So then Beau can take that off.
Yep.
Okay.
Denise, what were the three festivals you said? Fall Fest, what else?
Freedom Fest and Marina Fest.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we got through 50 pages today.
Excellent. Little past our 8:30 thing, but thank you again, everyone.
Hold on Denise, hold on Denise, it was eight o'clock last time. You just ruled, you got an extra 35 minutes, not just five minutes.
Oh, was it? Oh, I said two hours and we went to eight. Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you, Nate, for being generous.
Yeah, and if you would have kept it.
Everybody else.
If you would have kept it to 8:15, then Nate wouldn't be missing next week. So the extra 20 minutes tonight cost us Nate for all the next week.
Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:35. Motion by Burdo.
Second.
Second by Grotz Macher. All in favor, respond with an aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Jeff.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone. Bye bye.